Welcome to the July 2nd meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I don't know, James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore, absent. Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Schonheider.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bernie. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by mayor. I do have one resolution that we will present this evening. It's a resolution of appreciation to Scott Mose for his 25 years of service. I understand that our acting chief, Jim Held, is here and he's going to present the resolution. Jim?
Yes, Scott served 25 years with us. I'm going to miss him greatly. He was a very valued employee. The resolution reads, "Whereas E. Scott Mose has been dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since September 3rd, 1987, and whereas E. Scott Mose will be honorably retired from the city on June 29th, 2012, and whereas E. Scott Mose served in the following positions during his dedicated career: Police Officer, September 1987; Lake County Metropolitan Enforcement Group, 1991 to 1993; Investigations Unit, from 1996 to 1998; Northern Illinois Police Alarm System Emergency Services Team, 2000 to 2007; Appointed to Officer in Charge, July of 2005; Promoted to Sergeant, 2007; Promoted to Commander, in 2008. Whereas during his career with the City of Lake Forest, E. Scott Mose accomplished the following: Police Training Institute, Champaign, Illinois; Basic Law Enforcement Academy, 1987; Northwestern University Center for Public Safety Supervision of Police Personnel, 1992; Lake County Metropolitan Enforcement Group Director's Award, 1992; Lake Forest Police Department Life Saving Award, 1994 and 1997; Lake Forest Police Department Commendation, 1994, '97, '99, and 2000; Lake Forest Police Department Honorable Mention, 1994 and 2005; Northern Illinois Police Alarm System Unit Citation, in 2005; the NIPIS Meritoria Service Medal, in 2007; Northwestern University Center for Public Safety Police Staff in Command, 2008; National Lewis University Bachelor of Arts Applied Behavioral Science, in 2008. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to E. Scott Mose for public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk, being hereby instructed, deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to E. Scott Mose the second day of July, 2012."
Thank you, Chief. I'd ask the council for an action to approve the resolution. Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Scott, do you want to, hey Scott, do you want to tell everybody that you're not just retiring to go home and sit around and eat bonbons? You want to tell them what your next career is going to be?
Yes, sir. Good morning, with the office of the Executive Inspector General.
So some of you might bump into Scott every now and then down in the city of Chicago. As long as you're not being inspected.
The other comments I would have is simply to remember the Fourth of July coming up. We have some great activities, obviously the fireworks, the bands on Wednesday evening. I believe they start 16 Candles is the first band at six, 6:30, six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. And Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Parade, I believe is at 10 o'clock a.m. in Lake Bluff. So you've got a full day planned, stick around in town and enjoy it. Those conclude my comments for this evening. The next are comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the city council. I was just having two thoughts. One, I feel very safe right now because I think every police officer we have in the city is in this room right now. I don't know about the streets out there, so we better get to this item really fast so they get back to work. This is presentation of departmental awards for the police department and I'll call on our acting chief, Jim Held, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. Prior to this, I just want to introduce our new police officer. Chris, did you come up here? This is Chris Bellicor. He just started with us. He graduated a couple of weeks ago from the academy, so he's with the FTO program now. He is actually a graduate of Lake Forest High School, so he's a local boy. So this is Chris Bellicor. We have roughly nine awards, but you don't have to sigh. Six of them are all together in one group, so it won't take that long, okay? I think we have three of the people for this first award that are here. So with Charles Flesh, Bob Healan, and Mark Sanger. Come on up here, please. This is a departmental honorable mention award. The three other officers are Adam Mulcharak, Dwight Davis, and Marty Blitzstein. Adam and Dwight are both on vacation and Marty is getting some rest because he just started the midnight shift last night, so he's still getting a sleep in. To summarize this award, this was something that happened back in 2011 where Officer Mulcharak actually responded to the initial call of suspicious circumstance. And normally that's a call that you kind of go on, you check things out and see what's going on, and usually leads to nothing, but instead of just clearing the call as a gone-on-arrival type of call, he went the extra step and he located a home in this area that was out on Carroll where a garage screen had been removed. So he started doing his evidence processing at the scene and was fingerprinting the screen in the window, and he sees a potential suspect run by him. He gives chase on foot. He calls for help and Officer Davis and Officer Flesh, they arrive on the scene, they set up a perimeter in the area, and they assist in the search for the suspect. The suspect was eventually apprehended, then Officer Flesh, who's also an evidence technician, began processing the crime scene while Officer Davis began what's called a neighborhood canvass, checking the area, checking other homes. Officer Healan and Officer Sanger then arrived on scene. They were on the day shift, the other officers were on the midnight shift. This kind of happened a couple of hours before a shift change, so we had one shift going off going in and another shift coming on, coming out to help them. So when they arrived, officers had found, they had found there were more homes that had been broken into or attempted to be broken into. Officer Sanger then assisted in crime scene processing and Officer Healan began another neighborhood canvass. And Officer Healan eventually located the next two suspects. Investigator Blitzstein, who happened to be on, off that day, this was Thanksgiving weekend, so he was off, he responded from home to assist. He assisted with the interviews of the suspects by the other officers, and they gained all this valuable information that eventually led to the arrest of the three suspects for burglary charges to, I'm not sure how many homes it was, it was quite a few homes out there. There was all 12 or 13 homes that they tried to get into. And then Officer Blitzstein eventually got a search warrant and pretty much recovered the majority of the property that was taken and returned it to the owners. So it was a great effort, great team effort by the midnight shift, the day shift, investigator coming in, supervisors managing the scene, so just a really good job by these six gentlemen. So, thank you. This next award is a little unique. It's for C.S.O. Brian Esmond.
Is this for writing a lot of tickets?
No, actually not. Brian's a community service officer with us. He's also been applying for police jobs in other areas. We're hoping he's going to take our test come this fall. On June 5th, 2012, he was returning to Lake Forest from an assignment outside of town. He was coming north on the Eden's Expressway and he noticed that there was an occupant of a vehicle traveling next to him who was smoking from a glass pipe. C.S.O. Esmond used his radio to dispatch what was going on. They basically told him to keep an eye on the guy. They contacted Illinois State Police District 15. He did that via radio. He continued to follow the person north on the Eden Spur. The sergeant that day was Verbeke. He advised of his location and kept updating District 15, the state police. He then exited Route 37, provided the description of the vehicle, and eventually this trooper stopped the vehicle and located more than 120 grams of cannabis and paraphernalia in the vehicle. The Illinois State Police commended C.S.O. Esmond for his actions which led to this felony arrest. It reflects very highly on us, Brian, and congratulations. This next award is for Commander Carl Waldorf. This is a life-saving award. On May 17th of this year, approximately 6:10 in the evening, Lake Bluff Police Department received a call about a male juvenile who had run away from his mother. The mother reported concerns her son might harm himself. Shortly after receiving the lookout from Lake Bluff, Commander Waldorf observed the youth running in the area north of Lake Road. Commander Waldorf then exited his vehicle, followed the youth on foot, finding him walking out into Lake Michigan. Commander Waldorf was able to talk the youth out of the lake and took custody of him. Lake Bluff Police responded and transported the youth away from our area into a medical facility, and it's quite clear that without his actions that this, something harmful could have happened to this child. The Lake Bluff chief also sent me a wonderful email commending Carl for his actions. Congratulations, Carl. Last one. This is another life-saving award to Officer Brett Marquette. On January 20th of 2009, about 6:30, Officer Marquette responded to a home on Old Elm Road for report of a stove fire. On arrival, he observed a large amount of smoke coming from the northeast door. Knowing the 9-1 wall came from within the residence and fearing the caller may still be inside and need assistance, he entered the rear door which led to the kitchen. Upon his entry, he observed flames coming from behind the stove traveling up the wall and into the ceiling. Officer Marquette promptly uses his fire extinguisher. He extinguished most of the flames that he could. He yells for anybody in the house and ultimately heard a resident call out, "I am in here." Unable to see anybody, he advanced through the smoke into the room south of the kitchen and located a resident. He assisted a resident who had limited mobility out of the house, and shortly after the fire department arrived, they confirmed the fire had been extinguished. Due to the amount of smoke in the residence and the limited mobility of the resident, the quick response and immediate action taken by Officer Marquette not only saved property but saved the life of this resident. Well done, Brett. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jim, and congratulations to all the award recipients. Well done, well done. I guess the next item would be appropriate to call on Michael Thomas if he's available. Here he comes. I think as the council probably knows, June represents the fifth driest month in recorded history, and so there's been a lot of water usage by our residents, and we had to put out the sprinkling ban notices to our residents, and Mike's going to give us an update as to where we stand with plant capacity usage and where we go from here. So Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In front of you, we have a PowerPoint presentation, very quick, to review our water usage over the past two months. Here's just a good history for May and June, which tend to be very high months for us. As you can see, this year, 373 million gallons pumped so far, second highest since 2005. Our water plant was put into service in April of 2004, so we are pumping a whole lot of water. We're selling a lot of water, and that is a good thing. Wanted to bring you through a quick timeline as far as how we got to the water restrictions that we have. We had a couple of water pumps at the water plant fail on us on June 22nd, two raw water pumps. We then asked our Parks and Forestry section to reduce their watering as well as the high school, east campus, high school. West campus is on a water well, east campus irrigates, but we asked them to back off on the irrigation. We went ahead and put the water restriction signs out, asking residents not to water between 10 a.m. and 8 p.m. That allows us to fill up the elevated tank and the booster station. We need time to fill those up, so nighttime, we got a huge demand. Both of those, they don't get emptied, but we pump a lot of water in the overnight hours. We need the day to fill up. Deer Path Golf Course as well was asked to limit their irrigation. On the 25th, we asked, again, Parks, Forestry, and the high school to shift to every other day. On the 26th, we worked some arrangements with the Deer Path Golf Course where they would irrigate 4 a.m., 4:30 in the morning. We see a peak demand starting at 10 p.m., and as the morning goes on, it gets heavier, but Deer Path is able to work things out where they had irrigation begin at 4:30 in the morning. On the 29th of June, a couple of days ago, we had our booster station, elevated tank, were beginning to get at what we refer to as critically low levels. So we replaced the water restriction signs rather than a time. We asked residents to irrigate on odd even. Simply means if your address ends in a five, an odd number, you have water on an odd number day, even number on an even number day. The parts for the two raw water pumps and the service to repair those occurred on the 29th, so we have all four raw water pumps back in service. On the 30th and the 1st, we received some very light rain, and the water plant was able to meet demand. And again, on the 2nd, we spoke with the, today, we spoke with Deer Path Golf Course and said, "Please irrigate with some discretion." The hurdles that we have with our water plant, and this is typical for this time of year, May and June, it's lake temperature. When the lake warms up, we can get more water out of the water plant. Because of the fibers that we have, the water quality, as I've spoken before, is wonderful. It's the best in the state, if not one of the best in the country. But the restriction is that the fibers, the water that goes through the fibers reacts differently in cold water, and we can't get as much water out of the plant. Air temp may be 95, lake temp, 28, 28 feet down, could be 48. So the closer we get to the high 40s, the less water we can pump out of the plant. Fiber permeability, the ability for the water to get through those individual fibers, again, lake temp and dirt buildup. The elevated tank, the maximum elevation on our water tower is 46 feet. We're operating anywhere from 30 up to about 42. We start getting down around 24. We're in our department up and talking and figuring out how we're going to adjust accordingly. The booster station maximum is 16 feet, 4 million gallons. Again, that's across from west campus. When we get down to approximately 6 to 7 feet in the booster station, we really want to back that off for emergency supply in case the fire department needs something. And again, obviously, equipment failures or main breaks, those are all different things that could have an impact on the supply. Worst-case scenario, if anything, if any of these were to occur, we would recommend putting out additional signage at subdivision entrances. We have in the past done reverse 911 calls to residents where we simply make a recording and it goes out to residents' home phones as well as cell phones if they have signed up for their cellphone to be on that service. As well, the possibility exists, and we have in the past at times opened up our interconnects with the Village of Lake Bluff and the City of Highland Park. That's totally though based on their ability to supply us water. If they're running low, they're going to have a difficult time supplying us water. And Highland Park made it very clear to us that if we need to come to them, it's fine, but they asked that we really put a push on limiting irrigation throughout town. So those are, I wanted to give, again, just a brief history on how we got to putting out the signs over the past week or two, and the fact that everything is under control. We're pumping anywhere from 10 to 12 million gallons a day, and things are holding up fine, but like I said, we wanted to review with you where we're currently at. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
What percentage of our daily consumption in the summer do you think the golf course comprises?
The golf course, well, and here I have some good information. I thought I was anticipating that question. Our top 10 water users, number four is the Deer Path Golf Course. Deer Path uses about 12.3 million gallons a year.
A year?
A year. So 2011, revenue-wise, they pulled in approximately $60,000 to the water fund. Right below them is Delmar Woods. It's the one unit that we supply water to outside the City of Lake Forest. They're number five on the list.
There's my next question. When are we disconnecting?
We are. When that's in the works, we hope to have the disconnection sometime by this fall, but they're trying to work an intergovernmental agreement with both the Village of Bannockburn and the City of Highland Park. They've been working on it. There's been a lot of turnover in the Highland Park government, so they're getting close, they assure me.
I think the agreement's on Bannockburn's agenda this evening. Next week.
So there's an impact. There's an impact to the water fund. If we begin, and we will, Delmar will come off the revenue side, and that's approximately $50,000 a year to the water fund. So it's just something we need to take into account. But the golf course has, I know in the past study, the idea of an irrigation well, and I remember back in 2004 when we put the plant in service, they did ask city council their opinion on it. At that time, the city council responded by saying, "The water plant and the bonds that were taken out for the water plant were based upon quality and quantity issues," and that they were very hesitant to let go of a big water customer because we had just invested a lot of money into the plant. So there's a couple of signs, yes.
Mike, how are we getting the word out to the residents about the watering restrictions? I know there's, I've seen signs posted. Is it on the city's website? Is it?
Signs and website. Susan Banks put out a press release as well. And right now, we're comfortable with that. Residents have called us, and actually, it's interesting, residents are calling us when they see neighbors or other people watering on incorrect days, so it's wonderful. We appreciate that. And things are working. We talked to the guys at the water plant, and at times, they're on edge because it's a big responsibility, but the other side of all of this is that we want to obviously generate revenue for the water fund, too. So it's a mix. So we're doing fine. We're really, now we're doing okay.
Just a question, because my lung looks really bad. If I was going to water, what hours of the day are the best so I'm not putting a lot more strain on the city water system?
Early morning. Early morning from, anywhere from 4 a.m. to 8 a.m. is really the best time. And we will see, we look at all of our trend charts, usually by 9 a.m. all the levels, all the indicators we have throughout the city begin to level out and we start to rise. If we don't have that booster station filled by 5 p.m. in the afternoon, and we switch and we start filling the water tower by 10, if those trends don't continue daily, then we start to react differently. It's simply one of those issues of we've got to be able to catch up, and the daytime's the time for us to catch up, and quite honestly, the best time to water is not during the day. It's in the early morning hours. So it's best for both the residents and us as well.
Does my stepson show up on that top 10 list of watering?
If he does, we thank him very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda is comments by council members.
Oh, this is a perfect segue. I would love for council to revisit the water supply situation at the golf course. And I know it's the fourth biggest user of water, and that $60,000 a year goes a long way to cover the debt service on the bonds, but the golf course doesn't need chlorinated drinkable water to water greens and fairways. And three other golf courses in town, Conway, Knollwood, Anwensia, they all put in their own wells because it is far more cost-effective, I believe, to spend the money to sink a well for irrigation purposes. And what happens is with Delmar, with the golf course, we get into this restriction and people have to cut back. I mean, we all have investments in our landscaping that's jeopardized, put at risk, but looking at the golf course for a second, the golf course has struggled financially, and I think we have to do everything possible. I think if it were a private endeavor like Anwensia, Knollwood, and Conway, we'd switch over to a well in no time at all. So I would like for the council to consider, at least during these economically tight times, let's go revisit it, let's revisit it and see what the economic impact is of putting a well in for irrigation purposes at the golf course.
We have information from, I think it was probably seven, eight, nine years ago. We could certainly update that, bring it back to Public Works Committee, city council, whatever, that would show both the impact on the golf course and its operations as well as on the water operations and what that might mean to future rates.
I didn't realize until Michael mentioned it tonight that west campus has its own well. I do know that the town line ball fields, the new ball fields over there, we have a well in there. There's a well that's running and keeps that detention pond right at the outflow level. I was over there at 5:30 in the morning Wednesday. The sprinklers are going. It's a beautiful thing. They're irrigating the heck out of those fields, keeping them green so the kids can play soccer and baseball over there. You know, for the golf course to have to, first of all, it's paying more for its water than it would if it had a well, so it's hurting our bottom line economically. But secondly, it's hurting the product. I mean, if the golf course has to cut back on its watering, that's the product they're selling, their lush fairways and greens in a beautiful environment for the golfer's experience. So I mean, there's all these compelling reasons why we should look into a well or maybe three wells and keep those detention ponds full, you know, pump them up and then use it to irrigate, but I'd really like to revisit that and do an economic analysis.
Okay.
Any other comments by council members?
Just picking up on that, all those points make a lot of sense, but if the bonds were underwritten, assuming that revenue stream, we have to make sure we don't breach anything in the bond covenants.
George, I agree with you, and yet I know I pay one-third the amount of money for water in Lake Forest on an annual basis than I do for a summer home in South Haven, Michigan. We've got to bargain with our water. So one could argue reasonably that the golf course is subsidizing everybody else's water bills. So if you had to goose everybody's water bill a little bit, I mean, I certainly don't want to jeopardize the debt service, but I don't.
It's just a point we have to look at. Apparently, that was a big consideration the last time around, so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that was on the agenda for the analysis as well, just because that's, we just have to be careful about that.
Any other council comments? We'll move on to our next item, which is the Finance Committee. Alderman Pandeleon.
The first and only item from the Finance Committee is consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2013 and approval of rollovers. It's a first reading, and Elizabeth Hollab, our Finance Director, who hopefully all of you have met by now, is going to give us a little background on this.
Thank you, Alderman. Good evening, Mayor and council. And if I may just start out by saying how thrilled I am to be here. I very much appreciate the vote of confidence from city manager Kylie, and I'm very much looking forward to working with all. looking forward to working with all of you and the staff in serving this fantastic community. The item before you this evening, introduced by Alderman Panaleon, is the annual appropriation ordinance as well as rollovers for fiscal year 13. This is the formal legal mechanism to authorize the expenditures included in the fiscal year 13 budget that the city council authorized on May 7th. It does include rollovers, which are fiscal year 12 budgeted items that will be completed in fiscal year 13. And the other item to note is that the appropriation ordinance does include $225,000 in expenditures for the Housing Trust Fund that was authorized by the city council on May 7th, but not anticipated in the fiscal year 13 budget. This is, as noted, the first reading. There will be a public hearing on July 16th, if the first reading is approved this evening, in conjunction with the second reading, which will allow the filing of the appropriation ordinance with the county by July 31st.
Are there any questions or comments?
If I may, Elizabeth, just to be clear, you mentioned allocation from the Housing Trust Fund. Those dollars are coming specifically from the trust fund, not from any other source?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
There also is inclusion of library and...
School District 67 is, as a charter school, will be included. Their estimates have not been provided, but they will be included in the ordinance presented on July 16th for second reading.
And those were also not in the budget?
Right.
Simply because they come from another source?
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anyone from the public this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Worth. I live at 955 Melody Road in Ward 3, and I just wanted to say a few comments about the hospital plan. I've tried to go to as many meetings as I can and look at the website, and I was at the Ward 3 meeting. And I think that there are, as we work through this process and assuming that the special use permit is granted, I've heard of some of the conditions that were suggested by the council, but I wanted to emphasize at least three important points related to that. Number one is traffic. The traffic study that was done, I think, was fairly cursory, and before ground were to be broken for any kind of large hospital product, I think we need to have a better traffic study and approvals of various ideas that were set forward. We all know that Illinois is essentially insolvent, so the idea that Highway 41, 43, or 60 are going to improve themselves is not realistic. So the hospital should be held to a standard of funding needed improvements themselves and securing approvals from the state in the future. Number two, as it relates to money and taxes, I think if the hospital continues to come forward to the citizens of Lake Forest and ask for special use permits and special treatment at the same time not paying taxes, I think they should be required to sign a pilot agreement, which is a tool that other communities have used, primarily private colleges, Harvard, Princeton, others do this in their communities, so that the organization that is getting a large benefit from being located in our community pays its fair share of some of the costs that it imposes on the community. And third, I think we need to have a better understanding of the true economic cost-benefit analysis of the various proposals that they put forward. It's, you know, sometimes to say that you're not fully supportive of a big fancy new hospital in your own town is like being against, you know, apple pie and the Fourth of July. But when you really look at the, where $400 million or $500 million in construction cost is going to go, it's not going to go to the people who live here. And many of the patients are Lake County patients, not necessarily Lake Forest patients. So you have to weigh that cost-benefit analysis very carefully and consider the alternatives such as expansion through satellite into other areas of Lake County, which the prior owners had started to do, and also the alternatives that we as individuals have when it comes to health care, such as going to Highland Park or another hospital that is not necessarily within the Northwestern system, competes against Northwestern, but as individuals, we have access to some very fine health care that may be available without, we may have to drive a little bit farther, but we would not have to put up with some of the issues posed by a large hospital in the middle of town. I also did hear a lot of talk about the open lands issues and setbacks, and people had a lot of good input on that, but those are other details that should be looked at more carefully. Condition in an ordinance is different than a easement that runs with the land, so there's many things that we can do as we move forward to put real teeth in any approvals that are provided over time, so that if there's changes in ownership, changes in executive leadership at the hospital, we know that the citizens will be protected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public this evening on non-agenda items? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the items for omnibus vote consideration. There are five items on that agenda. I'll read each of those, and then you can take one or all as you so desire. The first being check register for period May 26th to June 22nd, 2012. The second being approval of resolution regarding Yellow Book opt-out program. The third being adoption of the Lake County Multi-Jurisdiction All Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. The fourth being award of a bid for the emergency replacement of the Fitness Center HVAC Rooftop Unit. And the fifth being approval of the June 18, 2012 regular city council meeting minutes. Any questions, comments on any of those five items? If not, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
I move to approve the omnibus items.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck? Aye. Alderman Panaleon?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no ees, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. We have one, which is a consideration of an ordinance approving a zone change for lots 22, 23, and 24 of the Wedgewood subdivision from OA, Open Area to R4, Single Family Residence District. This is a first reading presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. Kathy?
This is a recommendation that comes to you from the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission considered this request for a zone change at the direction of the city council. The properties are city-owned parcels. They are located in the southwestern corner of the city. This is the city limits, right down here. They are lots 22, 23, and 24 of the Wedgewood subdivision. I wanted to provide just a brief overview of the timeline and a little bit of background on how these lots came to be city-owned and how this, why this zone change proposal is now before the city council. In 1979, the Wedgewood subdivision was approved. In 1998, at the request of the developer of the subdivision, the city council at that time approved a resolution accepting the donation of these three parcels to the city. The donation, as recalled by city staff, was made in an effort to close up, to finalize the subdivision, and recognizing that these lots are located at the very south edge of the subdivision, and they're adjacent to commercially zoned property, commercially zoned and developed property located in Bannockburn. In, so in 1998, the city accepted the lots, took ownership of the lots, and consistent with the resolution accepting the donated lots, the city council rezoned the properties to OA. They were previously zoned R4, single-family residential zoning, as were the rest of the lots in the subdivision. They were rezoned to Open Area as part of the acceptance of the donation agreement. The 1998 resolution that was approved by the city council had two stipulations, that the city would have, would keep the properties rezoned to OA, not sell the properties until the earlier of either full buildout of the subdivision or the passage of 10 years from the date of the resolution itself. In 2005, the Planning and Preservation Subcommittee of the city council undertook a review of all properties owned by the city, looked at the inventory, and at that time, these three lots were declared as surplus properties through a resolution adopted by the city council. Shortly after that, there was some discussion of rezoning those properties. At that time, it was then recognized that the conditions of that initial resolution had not yet been met. In 2008, the conditions of the resolution were satisfied in that 10 years had passed since the date of adoption of the original resolution. In 2010 and 2011, there were a number at the direction of the then Property and Public Lands Committee, there was a number of communications with neighbors in the area, with the homeowners' association. That communication occurred in correspondence, and there were also two meetings with neighbors. Staff met with neighbors on two occasions. There was interest expressed by the residents individually and by the homeowners' association that the lots be retained as open space in that they served as a buffer from the adjacent commercial use. However, in that timeframe, 2010, 2011, there was an offer of a dollar made to the city council by the homeowners' association to allow transfer of those properties from the city to the Wedgewood homeowners' association. In 2011, staff conducted various studies at the direction of the Property and Public Lands Committee. The noise study that had previously been done when the tollway was being reconstructed was revisited, and there was also a study of wetlands and drainage swale on the property. After that work was complete, staff reported back to the Property and Public Lands Committee, and based on direction from the council, the zone change was moved forward as a first step in considering the longer-term disposition of these properties. The Plan Commission, at their last meeting, considered the request for zone change, heard public testimony, and voted five to one to recommend approval of the zone change to city council. Although the zone change is not conditioned upon any specific recommendations from the Plan Commission, separately, the Plan Commission did forward to the city council two recommendations. One, that after first reading of the ordinance, that the city council pause and give some continued effort to communications with the homeowners in that area to see if there is a workable solution, and to consider options for how these properties might, might be disposed of over the long term. The second recommendation from the Plan Commission was to preserve the southern 50 feet of lots 23 and 24 in the event these lots are sold, recognizing that these were the lots that were most impacted by the commercial development. So Lot 22 is really buffered by the existing, and is part of the existing cul-de-sac here. Lot 23, although it abuts the commercial property, which is located in this area, abuts the lawn area of the commercial property. Lot 24 does about, abut the parking area. So the recommendation was to preserve a 50-foot strip on these two properties, as we would do with the new subdivision, to assure that some buffering remain in that area. The ordinance is before you tonight with a recommendation for approval of first reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kathy? Do we have any members of the public that wish to make comment before we bring it back here? Yes, and I would ask you though, please, that, first of all, be advised that this council has watched the Plan Commission meeting, we're fully aware of your comments made then. I was actually an alderman in 2005 from the 4th ward when this land was put up for surplus sale at that time. I've got a long history with this property as well, so we don't really need to go back through each page, each stage of this process, so if you have any other general comments you'd like to make, please do so now.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Webb Bassett, 1951 Wedgewood Drive. I'm the president of the homeowners' association of Wedgewood. I do have a presentation I'd like to make. I understand you have a four-minute time limit. We do have multiple people who are prepared to step up in the alternative. If you'll give me the latitude, I can run through this in less than 10 minutes, particularly since you say that you have seen the Plan Commission meeting.
We have, and I think that, you know, I really don't want to be redundant here. This has been going on for well over 10 years, and it's the same information over and over and over, so...
With all due respect, sir, it has not been a two-way dialogue, it's been a one-way dialogue. We have never had the opportunity to have the city actually discourse with us on the disposition of these lots, and...
I don't think we're going to agree with you in that regard. I don't think we're going to agree with you in that regard.
That's up to you, sir. I believe that you are not being provided full and accurate information, and we would like our opportunity as public citizens to provide that for the record, and if you want to disregard it, that's certainly up to you, but to date, this process has been flawed, sir.
Now, we don't agree with that statement, but we'll give you five minutes. Go ahead and try not to be redundant through all these areas.
I, thank you. I'd like to direct your attention to page three, if I might. There is a, I believe, a key question of fact regarding sound. Staff has indicated that if all the trees were cut down on these three lots, it would make a one decibel difference in sound. If you would look on page four, you will see six different studies, including the Federal Highway Administration, IDOT, the UK Government, many, many more, and I've got another 16 in my briefcase, where they say that volume of trees makes between a six and 10 decibel difference in sound. Now, Kathy Cerniak had shown me this picture before, and I'd like to just bring it to your attention. She's focusing on LTV. Here's the three lots in question right here, and she's focusing on LTV. That's true. What she's not focusing on is 294 is right here. And so that taking down all the trees here, we're not talking about the noise from a parking lot, we're talking about the noise from 294. And Huff &amp; Huff's saying that it says that it makes less than a one decibel difference in sound is absolutely contradicted by actual literature, not a consulting firm, but actual literature. So I would call into question the conclusions of Huff &amp; Huff, and by the way... And by the way, I would point out, they did not go out and survey the property, they merely dusted off their report from 2008. The questions I would ask of this committee, of this council, is what if they're wrong? And what are the consequences of them being wrong? Page nine, we talk about light and, and the light pollution. Staff has not commented on light pollution, nor have they provided you any information on light pollution. On page seven, nobody has responded to the fact that it's our belief and understanding that the EPA must give you a waiver before you touch those wetlands on that property. Nobody has talked about that nor commented on that. On page eight, it is terribly frustrating for staff in their documents to state that we have not been responsive when the record is completely different, and we can document that record. And, and Mr. Mayor, you were actually on one of the letters that was sent to you about offering to do a swap with the city, as was Kathy Zerniak, as was Mr. Kylie, and that letter went unresponded to. We have several solutions that we put forward to the Plan Commission. However, the Plan Commission said that these weren't open to discussion with them, that they had to come to the council. One of our suggestions was make the swap for the one and a half acre lot. I, I asked Kathy Zerniak during the Plan Commission whether there had been an appraisal of the three lots done, taking into account the light, the sound, and the wetlands. No, she said. I asked if there had been any appraisal of the one and a half acre lot that we were offering to swap. No, she said. So how can this council make a financially astute decision without knowing the facts? You, you don't know what those three lots are worth, you don't know what two lots in that one and a half, one and a half acre interior lot, which, which may actually be worth more to the city. I, I don't know how you can make a decision without knowing the facts. On page 10, we put forth another proposal. That would say, if Huff &amp; Huff is wrong, would you agree to erect a sound barrier? Would you agree, if you're going to build on these three lots, that we can do something with the open lot that we have now that the historic building has been burned down many, many years ago? We're the ones that are paying the penalty here, and, and Mr. Mayor, I would note in the last newsletter, you, you talked at length about the strong financial condition that the city's in. I, I don't know what these three lots are going to bring. Some, some of the realtors have suggested they may bring much, much less than the $400,000 or $500,000 that was in the record previously, per lot. And, and if that's the case, what is the price of doing this, and what is the price on the residents around there? And, and again, back to my last comment, staff was not in a position where they could talk to us about different alternatives. All they could do was gather information, and, and we provided them with information. Nobody from the city has sat down with us to try to craft a workable solution. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other individuals? Yes?
I stood before you all a year ago, and I know there are some new faces, so in the interest of not being redundant, I will try very hard not to repeat myself. But since there are new council members, I think that we do have to repeat some of this.
Name, please.
Kathy Bassett. I am an attorney, a past member of the HOA Board of Wedgewood, and also I served on the caucus for three years. I did stand before you a year ago when you were asked to consider this issue. I read from a number of Plan Commission and staff reports that indicated strongly that the rezoning of these lots back to R4 from their OA designation would fly in the face of the developers' intent in making the donation and the Plan Commission's intent and the city staff in designating them as open space. Some of those statements I will repeat here. First, quote, "There is no intention to develop these properties but to allow them to remain in their current state to serve as a buffer between the residential neighborhood and the commercial uses to the south outside city limits." This is a quote from Kathy Zerniak set forth in an April 1999 Plan Commission report. Second, "The properties provide a buffer between the commercial uses in Bannockburn to the south and the residential development in the Wedgewood subdivision," unquote. This is a quote from the Plan Commission report dated May of 1999. Staff further explained that the OA zoning would assure that the property would not be developed, recognizing a comment from several neighbors who also pointed out that these properties in the current state are a buffer. Finally, and I think this is the most revealing quote from the May 1999, 1999 Plan Commission report, quote, "The proposed zoning OA is consistent with the goals of the City Council, to preserve open space and protect the value of existing residential uses," unquote. Council, what has changed since 1999 such that the City Council would now decide to sell the lots and no longer seek to preserve open space or to protect the value of existing residential uses? It's the duty of government not only to protect the value of our homes, but also to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Opening up our two adjacent subdivisions to noise and light pollution in light of the expansion of LTD commodities from a 100,000 square foot facility with eight truck docks to a 400,000 square foot facility now with 26 truck docks does not uphold either of these stated goals. Also, the expansion of the tollway has drastically increased the noise to the two subdivisions. As a homeowner who lives across the street from these lots, I also have a question about the process surrounding the declaration of these three lots as surplus property. I have a memo from staff to the Planning and Preservation Committee, it's dated August of 2004, and it recommends that a notice of intent to declare the lot surplus property be sent to adjoining and impacted property owners. I also read the city's policy for the inventory sale, lease, retention of public property, and it requires the city to send a notice of intent by certified mail to impacted property owners. I am here as an impacted property owner living across the street. The Rhodey family and the Rusznak families are adjacent owners. None of us receive such notice of intent to declare the property surplus by certified mail or otherwise, or inviting us to appear before the council or appropriate board or commissions. Shouldn't the city staff be held accountable for the due process provisions of its own ordinances and policies? I also am puzzled by the process of rezoning all three lots back to R4. Using the planned cluster development theory, it appears staff is depending on having the lots come back into our association so that they can aggregate the square footage of these smaller lots with our open space outlots to meet the R4 zoning requirement. Our deck says that two-thirds of the homeowners need to vote to bring these lots back into our association. Without this approval, our association members, of the members, I don't believe these lots can meet the R4 designation, and what motivation would we have to approve? In my remaining time, I would like to point out some misrepresentations or failures to represent all of the facts in the record that has been provided to you and the commissioners since October 2005. First, as Webb stated, why has the city staff never responded to our idea of swapping the prime 1.4 acre outlot parcel for the three lots that now serve as this important buffer? As a past member of the Board of the HOA, and after a face-to-face meeting with Kathy Zerniak, I put this request in writing in a letter dated six years ago. At her request, I sent it to my two aldermen at the time, Luby and Haddad, with a CC both to Kathy and to Bob Kylie. Our developer, Bill Kaufman, who's also sitting here tonight, also made this proposal to staff with no response. Also, members of the HOA who met with Kathy Zerniak and Ms. Walters about a year ago made the request, no response. Only the most recent staff report that you've received in your packet mentions this issue of swapping properties, and it misrepresents the facts. It says that we have done nothing, we have not acted on anything. In fact, the city has not acted, they have not responded. We are looking for a win-win here. I don't know all of the ins and outs of doing a swap, but this is an idea that could be a win-win. The city could get some revenue. It is a prime lot, 1.4 acres. It's at the corner of Devonshire Lane and Devonshire Court. These three lots are a buffer, and if they remain a buffer, we could have a win-win here with, with the homeowners still having that open space distance between a large commercial entity. Members of the council, we continue to request staff and the council to consider this win-win solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, council? My name is Roger Furch. I live at 1700 Devonshire. I can't get overly redundant on this subject because I didn't move to the city until 2005. I moved from crowded cities in California that never worried about their open space. Open space is important, open space buffering on an industrial area, a sound study that was made by a computer, and a sound study similar to when they put the expressway in. Why have I had three neighbors come up to me and say, "The noise in our neighborhood has gotten worse. At the risk of more noise in that neighborhood, at the risk of more decline in property values among all 60 lots, is it worth it for this city to give up open space?" Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Vic Philippini, do you have any follow-up on, for the record itself? This has been going on for so many years, back and forth, as to what the city's position or, on the zoning or issues, or any of those items that have been just discussed from the public?
Just to address a few of them, I, I believe that in terms of the overall subdivision, all of the property was developed as a single subdivision in a cluster format, and whether something is or not part of the association is not the relevant consideration, it's really how the initial subdivision itself was developed. These, these lots were originally R4 and were made available for development as any other lots. The change in the regulations from R4 to OA were consistent with the terms of the donation of those lots. The change in circumstance is certainly that those conditions have expired, so that would be one obvious basis as far as the return of the zoning to R4. It's consistent with the original developments, consistent with the adjoining lots. From a purely zoning analysis perspective, it would be very appropriate for the council to, to act in accordance with the Plan Commission recommendation. With respect to the notion that there's a requirement for buffering, that's a policy decision for the council. The council has every ability to revisit and change its policies, given the fact that the original policy was based on the conditions of the, the donation, which conditions have expired, that would be an appropriate time to revisit those, and, and I believe that, you know, that's the question before the council today. I'm not sure if there were other issues that you're interested in my addressing, but I'd be happy to do so.
No, other than any other records of the city as far as communications and the like, I know, again, this has been going on for, for 10-plus years, and I, I find it hard to believe that there's no communication back and forth between the parties as far as a outcome in any regard.
I, I haven't individually looked at the records themselves. I know that there have been communications, I've seen some of the records, I don't know the full extent of it. I would say that insofar as what notice is required, there is none. The city has a policy, not an ordinance, insofar as providing certain notices, but those are not requirements, and to my understanding, certainly there was enough notice to bring people here today and to bring them to other meetings. I know that the council has directed staff and the staff has conducted several neighborhood meetings, so there have been opportunities for, for those meetings to occur. As far as what the city is required to do in order to rezon property, notices were given, I understand that they were fully complied with. As far as if the council gets to the point of considering an actual disposition, the, the City Council doesn't have any obligation to notify neighboring, neighboring property owners of that, although I understand that certainly that information has been passed along, as is evident again from the comments tonight.
I would also add to that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that per the record that's included in your package, you can see, and actually you've previously received, the only formal correspondence that we received back in January 2011 from the homeowners' association, basically offering a dollar for the three lots to keep them open space. I would also point out that the action that is before you this evening is to rezon the property. Those conversations can continue if the homeowners' association wants to come back with a much more legitimate offer for the lots, be it a swap or otherwise, we would certainly be willing to entertain that, but I think as the city attorney would advise you, is that we want to make sure that they have the authority to swap without some other vote of the majority of the owners in the subdivision. So that's always still on the table. I don't think the city council's in a position where they're going to sell the lots tomorrow, but I think they're taking the first step in rezoning the property so that they are saleable, and we can continue to have that conversation with either the homeowners' association or anybody else in the community.
Just, just a further word on the swap. The proposed swap lots, the ones on Devonshire, are currently outlots. They are not authorized for any kind of development, and it's not simply a matter of someone wanting to make them available for that. There are a number of steps that have to go through. They would, I believe, and I haven't checked the declaration itself, but I believe the declaration would have to be amended to allow those outlots to be changed from outlots to developable lots. So I don't think that, as we sit here tonight, if one were to compare the three lots in question that are before you to the outlot in question, that those are comparable in terms of the development rights.
And just to confirm, Vic, that we're talking about, number one, this is a, a first reading, changing from open OA to an R4 zoning. You would have to go to a second reading in order to be approved, then we'd also have to have notice and go out to the public if we should so desire to put them on the market for sale. So we may have these go change back to R4, but not market them at any point in time or, if ever, or at some point in time in, in the future.
The rezoning will not change their current use, the rezoning will not change their current ownership, the council has other steps that will have to be done in the interim, correct?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I do, if you don't mind.
For the petitioner, I guess the president of the homeowners' association, can I ask you some questions?
Yes, sir.
The swap that you had in mind that has been discussed over a period of years, what would you have to do in order to make that legally possible? Do you have to get 100% unanimity of your homeowners' association, two-thirds? I mean, what would you have to do as a president of the homeowners' association to facilitate that?
I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to try and practice law, however, I have read the deck. My reading of the deck is it does not require, because it is a swap or exchange, it's not an asset sale, and so we would merely be swapping one lot for these three lots.
And you would do that without a vote from your association?
I believe we could, it's a different question as to whether we would.
And the neighbors, the people who are in immediate proximity of that outlot, which they might feel is a buffer, you don't think there'd be some resistance from them?
Well, one of them is sitting right here in front of you, and, and you're certainly more than welcome to ask him. The, the lot that's immediately to the west of that isn't part of the association, and the only other impacted, directly impacted lot would be south of that lot.
Okay, and have you had an appraisal performed?
No, sir.
On that lot?
No, sir.
Have you had an appraisal performed on the three city lots?
No, sir.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for you to, like, line your ducks up in a row, get the homeowners' association on board for the land swap, get your appraisals in hand, in fact, even go so far as to solicit an offer to purchase that lot possibly, and then come to the city with everything set to go and make it so that all we have to do is rubber stamp it, instead of kind of offering us a dollar, which sounds a little bit disingenuous, and asking us to do all this stuff for you, when in fact, everybody who bought into that subdivision bought into it when those were zoned residential, when there was a tollway there which creates noise, and LTV was there?
No, sir.
So the city didn't do anything to create the issues that you're trying to mitigate?
I, I know the city didn't, but that wasn't LTD there, with all due respect, that was FMC. It was a warehouse, it was an eight-to-five operation, it was not a 24/7 operation, and the loading dock-
the loading docks faced due east, they didn't face north. So the nuisance came to us, the nuisance wasn't there when we purchased back in 1982, nor was the nuisance there back when it was originally developed. But let me ask, let me answer your question. We have provided all of this information to staff, but they've told us they're not in a position to negotiate or to have a discussion. So what you'd be asking me is, should our Homeowners' Association pay the money to have an appraisal done of that open lot we're talking about swapping? Pay the money to have appraisals done of these three, without any assurances from this council that you'd be willing to entertain that? See, that's part of our frustration. That was a previous board that made the $1 offer. I understand how you feel about that, I would too. But it was also a previous board who did send a letter, and, sir, I'm troubled that you don't have a copy of it, I'm sure Mr. Kylie or Ms. Zerniak can give you a copy, of the letter that was also sent from the board offering the swap. And that was many, many years ago. It's frustrating to have this not be a dialogue. I don't know why it can't be a dialogue. If you guys say, yes, go out and get that information, and we'll absolutely have a conversation with you, that would be terrific. But I've never heard that. You're saying it, Mr. Edelman, is the first time I've heard it.
I'm only saying it because it seems logical to me that if I were in your shoes, if I had 50 homeowners and it cost me $1,500 to get a couple of surveys, and if everybody's in agreement and everyone's willing to absorb their 1/50th of the expense, I know when I used to go to the bank to borrow money, I didn't ask them to underwrite it. I underwrote it, walked in there, gave them the package, and I made their job easy for them.
All I'm asking for is some direction from this council as to whether you would entertain that. If the answer is no, I know you have to approve this swap. I know you'd have to approve anything we did, because it says in our deck, anything we do with that swappable lot we're talking about. And all I'm asking for is some indication from you, or from somebody of authority, that yes, do those things, and we'd like to have that conversation. Is that so unreasonable?
I think that opportunity exists, and I think that's why the Plan Commission said, here, give it first reading, here's what we want you to do. I watched it, I listened to it, I heard it, staff heard it, and I think, you know, the ball is back in your court again. If the homeowners wish to do something, they need to come up and present a plan.
But the Plan Commission...
If you're a purchaser, you need to go out of your way to become a purchaser or to put a plan together. The duty rests back on your shoes.
You've got to be proactive. You know, the issue before us tonight is strictly a rezoning. If we leave it open space, you've got no incentive to do anything but status quo. We're going to rezone it, I believe, and even though we're not putting it on the market, that doesn't keep any developer from coming to the city unilaterally and saying, hey, what about those three lots? So if we rezone them, there's a greater likelihood that those lots are going to be in play. So again, it would be incumbent upon you to do whatever you can reasonably do to maybe facilitate what your objective is here.
Okay, so if I could summarize, if we do those things, you will, somebody from the city with authority will have that discussion with us. Because so far, nobody we've talked to from the city has had the authority to do anything.
I object to that, Webb. We've had conversations for the last seven years, and I think Alderman Edelman has simply stated it, that up to this point in time, the $1 offer is the only official offer that has been provided to the city of Lake Forest, which was submitted to the city of Lake Forest.
No, sir, you're ignoring the letter sent by Kathy Basseck, as Secretary of the Homeowners' Association, offered a swap. It went to you, it went to Kathy Zerniak, and I know you have a copy of it, because you've told us before that you have a copy of it, and it went to our two aldermen. That was a formal offer.
I don't want to get into a back and forth, but we did meet twice with you and several of your neighbors. We, our purpose, we were sent there by the Property and Public Lands Committee to identify options.
That's right.
We talked about many options, we did talk about the swap, and we said, bring us a formal offer. We didn't say it as articulately as you did, but we basically said, bring us a formal offer, because we felt that the city couldn't be proactive and tell those neighbors that we were going to take their outlot. I believe we would have to amend the subdivision flat.
Right.
So it's not something the city could initiate.
I think we have to make it clear, when we're talking about a swap of land, we're not talking about an outlot swap. It has to be a buildable lot, which means that the subdivision has to be modified to allow the outlot to be a buildable lot, which it currently is not now. So going back to Alderman Edelman's point, is certain things have to happen by the Homeowners' Association before we can give serious consideration to any offer. If you want to take that step, there's certainly ample opportunity to do that, but you can't sit around and wait for three or four years.
I understand, and what I'm hearing from the council is, if we take that step, someone from the city will talk to us about it.
Sir, we've been talking with you about it. I'd like to make the motion we approve first reading of the ordinance, rezoning lots 22, 23, and 24 in the Wedgewood subdivision to R4, single family.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is new business. Anything else, Bob?
I have nothing.
No? Any additional items for council discussion? Move to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I second. Who seconded that?
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.